Okay, I'm going to call to order the school committee meeting. Of February 8th, 2021. And the first. Item on the agenda is the hearing of public comment. Hearing. Hearing none, I'm going to move to.
Uh, there is something in the Q and A. I'm not sure if that person is wanting to speak.
Okay, so Tony Patella.
Do you want me to move him over?
I'm sure.
Let's spot in Christine.
Hey, Tony, I think we've given you permission to speak.
Hi, Anthony Patella, 133, who's at Tonic Street Lenox. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I wanted to just. Thank the school committee. Wanted to. Ask if fall, the fall two is going to be addressed at any point by the school committee, or if that was going to be. A decision that's going to be left in the hands of. The high school, principal and administration. Um, let me, if I may, I'm sorry, Mr. Von. I asked this during the public comment or during this. Hearing on visitors because I wasn't sure if this was going to be addressed as part of new business or unfinished business. And I apologize if it was addressed previously. In the 129 or 21. Meeting, but I didn't see updated notes on that, so.
No, it is. Yeah, no, it has not been addressed. What would be the time schedule that fall two was supposed to be?
I can jump in if you want here.
Okay.
How you doing, Tony?
Good. How are you, Brian? Thank you.
So I just, the athletic directors got together and they they met actually at the end of last week to talk a little bit more about details around fall two and the spring. The right now, the fall two season is. Theoretically scheduled to start around the 8th of March. And so our our thought was to add that to the March 1st. School committee agenda.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. I just think it's a good opportunity if student. Students, student athletes are, you know, have an opportunity to to speak out certainly in favor. But I just think it's important as we move forward. With a number of the decisions that are going going on behalf of our students. That they potentially those welcome will have an opportunity, but that most importantly, that the school committee and or the administration have the opportunity to address fall two going forward. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, then moving on to the correspondence. We have had a letter from Molly Rivers. I believe that. Most of you've. Maybe you all got this. I think you all did. She continues to be frustrated by the fact that. The younger students are not fully in school. And. Included in her letter, you know, information about the report from Wisconsin schools about transmission. And she served, she's serving on the ad hoc medical committee as well as having been on the reopening committee. And. Is frustrated by the fact that there's there has been no. No solution, even though some of the schools around us. Are doing full day instruction. She outlines that in her letter. And she also mentions that. She and perhaps other. Parents are looking to school choice into other districts. Because of this situation, I don't know if I'm not thinking that that is choicing for this school year, but for a future school year. And was wondering if anybody was going to be attending the COVID-19 Challenges and Opportunities Conference in K-12 Education, which is coming up on February 11th and 12th. So later this week. So, you know, that's. Correspondence, that's the only correspondence that I had. And that will be in the public record. And then we have the school committee meeting minutes of January 29th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from January 29th, 2021.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a roll call vote. Bob Munch.
Bob Munch, aye.
Francie Sorrentino.
Francie Sorrentino, aye.
Christine Morrow.
Christine Morrow, aye.
Anne Marie O'Brien.
Anne Marie O'Brien, aye.
David Rimmer. Looked like an eye. Molly Elliott.
Molly Elliott, aye.
And Bob Vaughn, aye. And the school committee meeting minutes of February 1st, which was a week ago, the budget meeting with the elementary and the other departments.
Bob, I'll make a motion to accept the school committee minutes of February 1st.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Bob Munch.
Bob Munch, aye.
Francie Sorrentino.
Francie Sorrentino, aye.
Christine Morrow.
Christine Morrow, aye.
Anne Marie O'Brien.
Anne Marie O'Brien, aye.
David Rimmer.
Aye.
Molly Elliott.
Molly Elliott, aye.
And Bob Vaughn, aye. Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the superintendent's report. Is a revised Richmond tuition agreement. If I may speak to that, Mr. Chairman. The reason that something that had been voted on. And approved by the Lennox School Committee is coming back to the committee. Is that I had a request. From Peter Dillon, who is the superintendent for Richmond. For clarification, this was, excuse me, this was, he was forwarding this information from the Richmond School Committee. The Richmond School Committee was seeking clarification on whether. The tuition agreement between the towns for students to from Richmond to attend. Lennox Memorial Middle and High School. On a tuition basis. Would pertain to students who are not coming from eighth grade into ninth grade, but later on in their, excuse me, in their high school career. And so. I brought this issue back to Mr. Mr. Vaughn and. It's it's been the case for some time, as I understand it. That what the Richmond Committee is looking for clarification about has actually been been occurring. That is that students from Richmond who are. Sophomores or juniors who are looking to transfer. From another school. Into LMHS have been allowed to do so space permitting. And so this simply states what states as part of the agreement. What has been a practice between the town of Richmond and. The Lennox School Committee. For some substantial period of time.
And you'd like a vote from us on this?
Well, the committee originally voted on the tuition agreement, and I think this is a substantive amendment, even though it's a it's a clarification really, but it's an additional. Aspect of the of the formal agreement. So I believe a vote by the school committee is in order.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the. Richmond tuition and agreement, the Lennox Public Schools, Richmond. I'm not sure how to say it. Richmond Public Schools Tuition and Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a roll call vote. Bob Munch.
Bob Munch, aye.
Francie Sorrentino.
Francie Sorrentino, aye.
Christine Morrow.
Christine Morrow, aye.
Anne Marie O'Brien.
Anne Marie O'Brien, aye.
David Rimmer.
Rimmer, aye.
Molly Elliott.
Molly Elliott, aye.
And Bob Vaughn, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second and concluding portion of the superintendent's report. Will be a review of the preliminary budget. Excuse me, the budget summaries for fiscal year 2022. As they pertain to Lennox Memorial Middle and High School. And toward that end. We have with us this evening. Michael Knible, who of course is known to you all as the principal at the school. Brian Cogswell, who's already spoken at the meeting is here, and. I understand from Mr. Knible that there are other representatives of the faculty department heads. Who are present in case there are specific questions that members of the committee have about something. Having to do with the proposed budget. So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Knible.
You have my permission.
Thank you.
I would like to share my screen, so let me do that.
Thank you, everybody. So I appreciate Dr. Cameron and Melissa Farkowski working with me. And then the department chairs along with Nurse Jen and Stefan Phillips. Our Duffin Theater Manager. Working collaboratively to put this budget together tonight for you. In a simplified overview, we we really do miss seeing you in person. And so that you can hear all the details about the programs. But don't be afraid to ask questions. We've hit the highlights of our budget. If Melissa goes to the next slide. You will see that. We are asking for roughly 200, a little over 200,000 more than last year's budget. That gives us a 2.83 increase. Over the fiscal year 21. That is modest and conservative compared to the last year's budget where fiscal year 21 came in at 8.19% above fiscal year 20. But if we go back two years in fiscal year 20, we had a 1.4% increase over fiscal year 19. So we've been going in in and out like the tide. And I think what we have before you tonight will will do our students to the best of our ability. We start with the first department, which is the first program, which is building administration. A bittersweet announcement here is that we will have some personnel changes in the front office in way means of retirement. We do lose a great assistant principal, Brian Cogswell, and there will be some overlap in pay periods as he trains our new candidate. So there's a slight increase in reflected there, support staff contractual increases, but all other lines remain level funded as we did this year. If we flip to our second program, which is art in woodworking. Again, we have a retirement occurring in September. With an overlap of days where. Unfortunately, the retirement board doesn't. You know, have a have a way of. Teachers buying out their last month if it lags over and it puts the schools in in a bit of a hardship when it comes to overlapping a candidate for the position. I don't think we can start with one teacher in August and a few weeks later introduce them to someone new. So we will hire for this position this year. The overlap will help. Keep our program consistent. Leslie John is a. Dynamic teacher teaches multiple levels at the same time. So again, it will be a tricky replacement and you'll see that posted soon. We have an increase in dues and professional library in a decrease in field trips. And one reason for the decrease in field trips is depending on our hire, we we tend by policy not to have our our new teachers take students on a on a long trip until they get to know them better. Any questions there? Jonathan Cade is in our audience. Okay, hearing none. Program.
Mike, let me just say, I have some questions on some of these, but I was on the bigger document, not on the summary document.
Sure, you can you can question the bigger document.
Okay, I won't. I won't do that now. I'll wait till people can see it.
Okay. Then we move on to our English department. We have an instructional contractual raise raises. The point two faculty member that switched over is our one of our special ed teachers that returned to us this past year is teaching the sixth grade readings, so that is reflected in the salary line. Our field trips have a temporary one-year reduction. We plan on restoring some of our big overnight trips, but the the trip to Washington DC, we're definitely. Not planning on it unless we see some dramatic changes this summer. We do have revenues that Melissa has cornered for us just in case. It's beneficial to our kids to restore, but. Carrying it in a in a specific field trip line right now, we could cut back somewhere else in order to make that happen. Software and hardware, there's an increase due to more you more more clients using the vocabulary.com along with some of the other software that goes along with our Canvas platform. And moving to health education. You see a drop, a significant drop there, but it's not a very large budget. So a significant drop is is lesser money. We we have a retirement again in the salary line, so we we do expect to come in a little more modest with a new teacher. Field trips are reduced because. Ms. Teasdale was planning on taking excursions to Karpalo with her yoga class, and we are uncertain if we can actually hire another teacher that is not just certified in health, but certified in yoga as well. Red Cross certification increases. We we have always looked towards Ms. Teasdale covering our certifications for our coaching staff. For some of our teachers, and she shared it with our students, and many students were certified in CPR. But all other items remain level, which comes out to a net decrease. Moving into instructional services. We're supporting contractual increases. Mentor, the mentor line is increased. To cover us for mentorships for new staff that join us through the retirements. The school resource officer is receiving a contractual raise on the pay scale, and we budgeted for that. And we're planning to. Stay a little level, maybe reduce our tutoring line because Melissa has found a way to to. Use our our pandemic relief grants in order to cover some of the tutoring we are we are supplying to cover our remote learning and some of our our learners that are kind of stalled. Throughout this year. We also are looking to maintain our speaker line so that we can provide some educational programming around social justice and equity in order to meet our goals when we return to in-person instruction.
Mike, just, you know, one quick question there. On the mentors, are they one-year mentors? Or are they more than one-year mentors when you have a new hire?
It's one one year and and it's a, we're fortunate in Lennox to provide our own program. Some other districts will send their teachers and mentors out to Pittsfield. We have a mentor leader and it's a monthly meeting with the whole group of new teachers and mentors and a, you know, weekly contact with the mentee for the mentor. And that's that's in our unit eight contract that stipend.
Thank you.
Moving on to instructional technology. The salaries have contractual increases which give us the the net percent increase. Slight change in personnel made made a reduction in that line, and I believe that's the crossover between the theater and our instructional technology crew. Software licenses are increased due to subscription costs and added to the program to assist with remote learning and all other account lines are level funded. Mike Jackson is with us tonight. If you have any specific questions. And moving on to our math department, they have a slight increase along with salaries and column movements. I'm also planning for, you can notice in the in the second line, the extra sections. That's. My caution that we will end up with extra sections in order to meet all students' needs for the upcoming year. One thing we're we're seeing instructionally is that there's a slight widening in the gap. Between the top students and. Are all our others. So I'm planning to be able to meet their needs instructionally with the right curriculum. And some changes that are coming for. One, to maintain our state-aligned curriculum and be ready for an MCAS. And then two, so that we can offer courses that are relevant to the students. A lot of what I hear. Ms. Sorrentino say within our within our school committee is that we're also looking at pathways to careers, and we're working with the workforce. Crew in in Pittsfield. To help establish some of that programming. Math is adding, you know, the big ideas textbooks along with algebra and geometry books. The 5,000 is really consumables. And the software line is decreased to reflect our anticipated purchases that we can perform this spring. And all other account lines are level funded. I got to hand it to David Pugh because he is very efficient at running. The math department that that encompasses all our students and more because some students will double up in math. The mid-school budget, it looks like a large increase, but it's really under $3,000. Again, it's covers the stipends for our team leaders, but I've increased our events and awards and supplies. And and that comes about every other year because we order bulk certificates and awards. And it's it's the year to replenish. I also have some field trip line money to assist in grade level trips where you've seen us reduce in other departments. You don't see a reduction here. Moving on to music, they have a small increase instructional salaries and hardware and software, which you, if you have a student in band now, you've seen it in your own house where students can perform individually and it can be combined through the software to make it sound like they're playing as part of a group. Mr. Kate has taken a one-year hiatus from field trips. You know, he he hasn't had the band together, so to speak, but he has worked with. The latest and greatest in. Personal protection for instrumentalists and vocalists, so we're ready when we begin to see students come back to school. And all other account lines are are level funded for next year in music. For our Health and Wellness Department, you see a modest increase with salary increases. Again, we had a slight. Few sections of PE covered under this retirement and. Will begin to interview candidates, so we. The salary is is middle of the road, and we want to find the best candidate. We are increasing additional sections because the health teacher we're losing was actually covering two full periods of our physical education or health and wellness requirements for graduation. So family consumer science and yoga both were an alternative to traditional PE classes for our upperclassmen in school. Without knowing we're going to find someone who's multifaceted that can teach family consumer science or be a certified yoga instructor, we're we're planning to be able to have kids in our regular health and wellness courses. And come up with some new electives. Moving on to science and technology. Again, you see a slight increase. There's a contractual increase. There's a decrease in conference and travel based upon what the department membership is. Finding that this new platform of Zoom is working for conferencing and traveling, and they don't need to go far to learn a lot. Textbooks do go up. Ms. Kaminsky is ordering a new anatomy and physiology textbook, and that's part of our movement towards the pathways to work with workforce and Berkshire Community College that our anatomy and physiology class will be approved for Berkshire Community College credit, which would be part of a health pathway or a health service pathway. AV supplies are decreased. We're looking to. To purchase new projectors for the science rooms this spring, so we will not need them next fall. They'll already be in place and software is increased due to subscription costs. Social studies. We have our contractual raises which give us a percent increase, some column movement within our social studies teachers due to advanced degrees. The supply increases. Due to some project materials and then field trips, they are taking a one-year deduction from what we have posted this year, so it was decreased as they paid for half of that Washington DC trip. That was a overnight field trip. The Duffin Theater is, due to the retirement of Al Saldarini, we have decreased. The Duffin Theater is, due to the retirement of Al Saldarini, we have decreased our salary line for the theater. Hardware and equipment was decreased because we are upgrading the theater now so that we are ready for the spring. And, you know, hopefully a relaunch of the theater this summer. Inspections is a new line item that used to really come out of receipts. But now we have it in the budget book so that it's in every year. And it's a, it's a place card reminding us to make sure we have all our rigging and our lights and certified and safe on stage. And there's a small increase for streaming software. You know, we figure that some homebound people would really love that live experience to watch simulcast events out of our theater. And maybe even family members that live on the other side of the country would tune in to watch a show. World language. We have our contractual increases. We have a field trip decrease and a testing increase, which is a more accurate testing for the performance level of our world language speakers. Special events, you'll see an increase as we anticipate the return of the International Fair. The next program is the library. We have the contractual increases. Books were able to decrease as we buy ahead this spring a little bit and equipment is reduced as we look to spend our, some of our capital money to buy some new furnishing for the library as we relaunch opening to students. In our guidance department, just a slight increase. We have contractual increases and additional days are included which help our guidance counselors plan scheduling with us in the, during the summertime. So we're ready for anything that comes at us. We have a retirement in the support staff, so we are anticipating entry level to be a little reduction in the salary there. Behavioral consultant has been reduced for one year as we're able to apply for the pandemic relief grant and, and, you know, edge out some money so that we have extra counseling consultants as students, you know, return to school or may have drifted a little bit apart from, from us during this difficult time. So we are anticipating having people on hand to work with some of our students as they return. And then software increases is really a Naviance cost is, is increasing as they expand that software package and we are looking to begin our students in middle school on the Naviance software. We're finding it difficult to do it this year being remote, but once we have them back in person, we definitely find that Naviance is a very important tool to plan ahead and pick their career path or college path. Our athletics are, you know, mainly remaining the same. A lot of the increases are contractual increases with the salary lines. Software was a modest increase on impact testing. It was under $1,000. Our big purchase is uniforms and that's detailed in your, in your book. I want to say that it was I just looked at it as well.
16,000.
Yeah, it's, it's, but there's three teams I believe we're looking at outfitting for next year. Mainly because it's not happening this year. We don't want to lose our rotation. And then awards are increased as we look to fit everything in the gym and the banners. We might have to reconfigure some of the banners. Other student activities, clubs and stipends again go up. The change in personnel for support has given us a slight decrease. Special events. It really is marked professional library special events, but that is for us to be able to have some help assist us from the outside and work with our students as a guest speaker or bring in a program or, you know, an informational night on internet use was about really needed now. And then drama, there's a slight reduction based on anticipated expenditures. In our health services, which is really Nurse Jen's office or Nurse's office. There's instructional decrease as additional days are now split with Morris. So you've seen an increase in their budget and a decrease in our budget. Dues has increased to you know, require the, for us to have a delegation-controlled substance. That is a license for, or it's, it's a membership that allows us to distribute prescription drugs to students that need it during the daytime. Supplies are decreased because we're not using a whole lot of our standard everyday supplies this year and they will be good next year. And all other lines are level. I gotta hand it to Melissa for her purchasing throughout the year because I'm sure parents hear about the hand sanitizer and the sanitizing wipes and the mask that we have along with other PPE and it really hasn't been a huge impact on our budget. She, she must have done a lot of work behind the scenes to make that happen for us. And then we end up with our other districts and as of right now, we have two prospective students looking to join the vocational programs at Teconic for next year. So this budget really helps us decide the best way to transport those students to and from school in the most economical fashion. We're fortunate that we have schools, neighboring schools that work with us in order to offset some of those costs. All right. So now we'll field those questions.
Okay, so I thought the way we would do this is go back to the top and do each section of the budget, if anybody has any questions. If there's no questions, there's no need to, no. But going back to the, to your full budget pages. So Melissa, if you can put the full ones up, that'd be great.
Yeah. And I have a general question for you, Mike. Just when you were devising this budget, what were you thinking the school year was going to look like in this period? You know, things back to normal?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I would love to think that it's going to be back to normal, but here's a little evidence that, that I sort of considered going forward. I, I believe that that it, it'll be normal for most kids, but I think we will have some kids that still struggle with. You know, I, I mean, there's no shame in saying that it, it has affected people mentally. And, you know, we have, we have learners that have you know, ADHD and OCD and, and different diagnoses already. And, and I've seen them have difficulty thinking about coming back to school hybrid. And, you know, one number I use, and I used it today with Dr. Cameron, we have 275 students that should be coming through our building every day. And we haven't crested 170 since vacation, since, you know, that we returned in January. And so as I look at, you know, long-distance field trips, I believe we have to be very careful not to invest in a full bus or a big coach. I did this myself as a band director down south. We worked for a year raising $150,000 to take our students to the Peach Bowl Festival. And I had a band of 120. I had 80 students go. We paid for 120 with hotel rooms and the buses and meals and everything. So I, that's, to give you an inside look of where my mind was, I, I wanted to be conservative and I think it's very important that we bond together inside our building as a community. But I do think we have enough monies to make transfers. If, if we see in September that you know, the Washington DC trip is the best move for our kids, I think we, we can make it happen.
I'm, I'm concerned, Mike, and this is not just at the high school level, but elementary level too, about whether, if, if it's safe to do so, whether we might be thinking about offering some summer programming. I did see in the budget some reference to a, a quick start or whatever it's called. But I was just wondering if it was going to be a broader initiative perhaps with the funding from the government?
Yes, it's in there. And actually Melissa worked up the figure for me. Looking at English and math in all grades for the summer from July until, you know, till about the second week of March. And that is in the instructional line.
Okay.
And I do want to say there are federal grants, monies available that we would be able to utilize for exactly that purpose should we need more.
And we've been talking about that in our faculty meetings. So I'm, I'm drumming up business for summer school help.
Okay. So I think then, I know Melissa's sharing her screen is it, these pages will be kind of small. I, I know Melissa, you can, you can go to your view options and make it bigger, or at least individuals can go make their view options bigger. But if committee members have their pages in front of them separately, that might be, that might be easy to read or raise your questions or whatever. So why don't we start with secondary administration and see if there's any questions on any of the pages relative to to that? And I can't see everybody. So just go ahead and start talking if you.
I had a question. It's not, it's in the longer-term goals, but I was curious to hear more about the Desi's internship program. And I can't remember, I, I switched to my Zoom.
Yeah. So we, the, and, and that's the pathways program that I spoke briefly about. It's, it's something that Desi and the workforce, which is the employment board is, is doing hand in hand. We did have two students apply this fall where they may be interning in a local sort of a, you know, a technical in a technical field that, that has to do with manufacturing locally. And they actually would put in hours after school and they would receive a stipend at the end of the year. Some of that time they spend would be counted if they were to do their start at BCC. So in conjunction with BCC is working with like Rensselaer and UMass and that, that there's an automatic transfer of credit. So it's difficult where everybody is working remote right now. But we, we want to see this expanded and you know, Brooke is an early adopter. She's, you know, she has participated in this before as a, as a anatomy teacher. So she's really excited that we can do it again, but we're also looking to try to gear our, our tech room with Mr. Kotay to fulfill some of those requirements. And then we would see juniors and seniors seeing some real-life job experiences in the future. It's, it's definitely going to be on my goal list for, for a return to school because there's a lot of, there's, there's, we're beginning the groundwork, but we're just scratching the surface with this pandemic.
Thank you. That, it sounds great. And it's very similar to some of the work that was done. Trying to think in the past with internships at availability to kind of vetted internships that I think makes sense for all students and.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and I'm, I'm hoping that our, you know, that as we work with our departments and our department chairs, that we develop a curriculum where it becomes easier for students to dedicate that time to their internship and still maintain a level of competency in English and math and science. Because our schedule is rigorous that we would, we would see them be able to, to receive some graduation credits along the way.
Any other questions on the administrative budget?
I, I just have a real quick question of the short-range goals. Mike, do you see any future role for Canvas once we're out of our current situation?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I think I, I think as, at the we, we will be masters of Canvas as we move along. And I think that it's a good, consistent way for students to have access to the curriculum when they're outside of school. I think, you know, it, it's better than carrying a textbook around. Is one way to look at it. You know, as textbooks become electronic, I, I think it, I think we can, we can really tackle some of the, some of the bugs we're running into now. Mike Jackson is already working on a lot of those bugs.
Okay. How about secondary art and woodworking? Any questions for either Jonathan or, or Mike on secondary art and woodworking?
I, I guess I was going to comment that on the, I wanted to applaud the, you know, under program concerns, it talks about multiple classes are scheduled simultaneously. And I have mentioned this in previous years of the budget that I I know scheduling is tricky because there's a lot of academic requirements and the way it all works. So I appreciate the flexibility of the art department to allow simultaneous enrollment because it helps students get the classes that they need and one, and maintain that art aspect. And I think that also, I, I also appreciate Mr. Cade's work and flexibility with the constraints. And I know that's you know, a challenge, but it, it does help the students fill in their, their schedule. So they are getting their required classes as well as maintaining these arts. So I just wanted to express an appreciation.
They do a great job.
Any other questions in that area? Okay, then let's move on to English. That would be Ms. Westbyzer and Mr. Kniebel. Any questions for the English department? I had a question on page 11, which is the detailed description justification. detailed description justification. And I have to find out what my question was as I scroll over this. Sorry about that.
Again, while you're looking, Bob, I can also comment that, um, similarly, I think, uh, the media productions class is, um, it's also, uh, in my mind, kind of an art area. And, um, I know in our family, that's been something that's been a great, um, asset and opportunity to kind of expand one's mind and do things outside of just the pure academic. So I appreciate, um, that that is offered and the creativity that it allows. And, um, especially in this day and age where there is so much, um, online and media, it's, it does provide useful tools.
Yeah. My question was a very minor question. It was actually on the page before, uh, page 11, at the bottom of the page where it says the instructional personnel, it was seven point two, seven point two, seven point two. And then there was nothing listed for the next couple of columns where you'd expect to see it. So, um, I'm presuming that the.
Seven point two.
Seven point two. Okay.
Seven point two. Yep.
Any other questions for either Lisa or, or Mike on the English department? Questions or comments?
And I just, it's Lisa Westbyzer. I just wanted to say thank you to Molly. And, um, to, I, I have to give credit where credit's due. The success of the media production program has rested, I think solely on the shoulders of Dr. Ben Weaver. So, um, he's doing a fabulous job. And thank you for acknowledging that. And thank you everyone for the supportive budget year after year.
Yeah. And one of the things that the committee has an opportunity on this particular evening is to hear about some of the special things that are going on, uh, in departments. And while it's, it does become a long evening, it's, it's really the, the chance that we have to learn about programs or aspects of the programs that, you know, those of us who don't have kids in school anymore, um, may not really be that familiar with. And so thank you all, all of you who are waiting in the waiting room for your chance to, uh, have your budget talked about.
Yep. Baba, can I just second that comment? Cause I was having a, a similar thought. And, and this is actually, I think one of the most, um, illuminating meetings on our annual calendar for that exact reason. Um, and it occurs to me that Zoom has, has, has changed the conduct of the meeting in a way that's maybe not as conducive to, to having that interaction with our department chairs. But so long as they're present and on the line, I, I, I would completely appreciate hearing from, um, from any of them about, things that are happening in their respective departments or anything that they would want to bring to the attention of the committee. Cause I, I find it, just, it, it's, it's just really time well spent, in my opinion.
Okay. So moving on to health education, which is Jeannie T's deal.
I had a quick question, Bob, because this is our night to learn. Um, and I, I was talking before the meeting about how I do learn a lot in, um, these meetings. I was curious to hear more about what the Massachusetts framework looks like compared to, so that's at the state level, what that's like versus, um, other curriculum or what, what it's been in the past and what it is now. Cause that was listed under, um, I think it was kind of long-term goals or one, um, kind of. So hearing more about, uh, from the English department about the Massachusetts framework to, to know more.
Um, it, I don't think it's, it has not changed. Um, I want to say the last updated one that I have is maybe twenty seventeen for English. Um, that doesn't even seem possible. Two thousand and seven, something with a seven. It's, it's been.
Seventeen is right.
Seventeen is when they, they hammered it down.
Okay. Um, anyway, I would say that we're all very well versed in it. Um, it's just, this might sound strange. At my first job out of college, we had this, um, saying that was stay in the funnel, tighten up, right? So the idea is like this, this is your framework. Uh, but sometimes as the case is, and I think a lot of parts of our lives, uh, things start to kind of like splash over the edge of that. And so just constantly reining it in and making sure that we are using the frameworks as our guide. So, um, across all the grade levels in the English department, they ask you to, for example, cite, um, be able to cite specific evidence in a text to support an idea. And there's varying degrees of specificity there and how, uh, sophisticated the students' ideas should be. But from six to twelve, and in fact, younger than that, um, you know, they're always asking students to do that. We're always asking students to write arguments, narratives, um, and expository writing. And within those make claims and support with the same evidence. And again, to varying degrees of specificity and along varying degrees of, um, sophistication. So it's just, we just like to check in and say, yes, we're doing this and maybe acknowledge, whoops. Um, I, I guess I, I, you know, I've been spending more time writing arguments than narratives. I should close that loop there. Um, and touching base with, oh, and maybe if I'm the ninth grade teacher, when I say that, the eighth grade teacher says, oh, well, we spent a ton of time doing narratives last year. And so kind of checking that, um, there isn't a, a gap anywhere, uh, within the whole department. And then also as individual teachers that we're all, you know, staying in the funnel.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know that back in the two thousand and seventeen, uh, changes there were. And, and it's not that we necessarily had to make all these changes, but there was a whole lot more attention to close reading. The high school level, much more, uh, complex text. Um, much more, uh, you know, much less fiction. Well, not maybe not much less fiction, but in terms of writing, um, not so much narrative and, and, and some of the other things. So I think you're doing a great job. Keep it up.
Thanks. Um, and yes, Bob, you're right. There has been a push towards informational texts. Um, but that's something that I, I think we've always done a great job at in our department. Um, is supplementing the narrative text with informational texts. And especially since we, since we teach English in a humanities approach as often as we can. Um, even if we are not doing informational text in the English class, we know that our history partner is, and so we can refer, um, and bring that in. So you're right about that. That element of the close read has changed too.
Okay. Anything else on, on English? Uh, moving on to health education, Jeannie T's deal and Mike Knievel. Any questions on that department? And I want to thank, uh, while we're, while we're here, I don't know if Jeannie's on the line or not, but, um, thank Jeannie for all the years that she's served our kids and hope that somehow she'll, there's Jeannie. Hope somehow she'll find her back to do some coaching with us. If you're not going to be teaching, at least come back and coach.
Jeannie has a journey and brings a huge loss to our district. It's quite a trifecta. It's going to be hard to replace.
That's for sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words. If you can hear me, I think I'm unmuted.
Yeah. Maybe a little louder?
Okay. All right. Let me turn it up. No, I'm, I'm very fortunate uh, to have taught or be teaching in a school district that has supported, uh, health education and valued health education. Um, I've got, um, with professional development, drug and alcohol counseling, um, my yoga certification, uh, the years ago, certified to become a CPR instructor, uh, in order to carry on the tradition of certifying middle school students. Um, I think it's, um, I'm really grateful for that. And I want to thank, uh, thank the school committee, but also thank, um, our administrators and, uh, particularly Bob Bond, because he is the one that hired me twenty-four years ago.
I was always proud of the fact that I discovered you, but then I lost you. But all for the good.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any, uh, other questions for Jeannie?
I, I have one, if I'm not muted. I just had a question regarding the, um, and I'm sorry, I'm asking this question after, I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm following up a great act and I apologize. The Health 101 newsletter. Is, is there any applicability for that to say to parents of, 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 you know, just even younger kid, you know, grade six and seven?
The newsletter is geared for high school and a lot of the information that's in there is, um, I would say more appropriate for high school. And they have not come, the people that make the Health 101, uh, have not come out with a middle school version. We do offer it for eighth graders too. I've used that from time to time. The PE department, um, uses that to supple- supplement their assignments that they are doing right now.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, uh, moving on then, and thank you, Jeannie. Uh, instructional services, Mike? Any questions for, uh, Mike on this?
You know, I just got a, a general question. I guess I see that there's a internet access fiber optic line for twelve thousand dollars under instructional services. And I was, I guess just curious what that was about.
That is fees that, uh, Mike Jackson covers, um, for our whole building to have the speed of access, you know, the fiber optic line to support our kids. Um, I don't, I don't think we have control over that line item.
I guess one of my questions is what it was, what goes under instructional services versus instructional technology? Is that twelve thousand dollars of service we're paying for? Or that's actually some infrastructure work?
It's for service. It covers our internet service. Uh, why that's in department seventeen versus nineteen, my honest answer is it's been there since I started in two thousand and four. Uh, I think that just because it was a building expense and, uh, the department budget can, I guess, looks a little odd that building wide just expenses, they went under department seventeen at that point. Or perhaps it came out, actually more than likely was because it was tied to the phone line. And I believe the phone line comes out of department seventeen. So going back to the nineteen nineties and you inserted a internet, you probably put it in the same budget line as the phone line.
What do you think, Melissa? Do we have it where it belongs or did, or should it get shifted somewhere?
Um, it, it could be in either actually. And it's, it, it's a matter of where I report it on the end of year report. As long as I know it's there, which I do, I can report it in the correct line on the end of year report. But you'll, you'll, you've noticed that I've made some accounting adjustments over the, the last year. So it, it could be in the other department nineteen, which is the technology as well.
Yeah, I was just curious. I, it popped out at me. That's all.
Yeah. I mean, I think we always kept it there because it, it's, it's really how we operate with instruction. You know, our instruction would look substantially different without it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Sure. Okay. And, um,
it was kind of like the copy machine. You know, it's a, it's a device, but it's, it what keeps our, uh, folders full.
All right. Uh, Mr. Jackson, I just want to compliment you on the superb job you've done this year. That's really been a heck of an effort. I know you put a lot of effort into it and it's, it's working remarkably well.
Oh, thank you. And that's, I gotta say that's due to a very, very strong team. We've gotten a lot of help. Tim has really stepped up. Uh, he, he's been doing gangbusters this year. We've got Alexis and Melissa in the library that have been answering the tech help emails. We've got, uh, Karen and Nicole in the office that are doing a majority of our Chromebook management. We've got the Morris office staff that have been handing out Chromebooks. So we've, we've been getting a tremendous amount of support from the staff and we are very, very appreciative of that.
It's come out really well. It's, it's noted and appreciated. So thank you very much.
I had a question, Mike, on the bottom of page. I gotta find a page number seventeen. Where you're talking about recommended program change under long range, consider remodeling, expanding or building a new structure to improve facilities. Now, I know we have, um, some serious concerns about the science classrooms. And it, it's been brought up again and again about, you know, instructional spaces. I, I know from, I don't know this from personal, but, but Francie's mentioned the, the bathrooms. Um, and some of this would fall under capital expenses to get things repaired, upgraded, whatever. And obviously the, um, science classrooms is something that Tim Lee was working on in, in two thousand um, seventeen or eighteen and and had got some preliminary sketches of, and directions that we might go. Obviously they were going to be pretty expensive and uh, and all, but, um, a new structure isn't gonna happen. Just so you know.
Well, it, you know, um, well, Melissa and I had a, had a conversation about this, um, where, um, we, we, you know, we did, we, when we were analyzing our numbers and our, the whole budget, you know, she added it into a, a different spreadsheet document. And, um, she was able to take the, the employees out and just look at what it takes for us to run the building. And I said to her, I said, you know, that money right there could be a payment, a yearly payment for five years on a bond. If we, we had everything outfitted under a new construction. And it would, it would, it would pay for half the bond. You would, you would, it would last for five years where we would be able to lower our bottom line. Um, but I also started to think about, you know, the, the, well, the fact that I've, you know, we've, we've used every inch of space to open hybrid. Which goes to show, if you want a graphic example of how tight on space our school is to do the programming we do. And no one wants to give up programming. I think if you ask any of the department chairs, they, you know, the smallest elective, they, there's a reason why it runs in our schedule and it serves a particular student. And we can't take that away. I, I feel that, um, think of, think of the opportunities that our students would have if we were room specific. That if a Spanish room was like walking into Spain and not in somebody's English class that had vocabulary words up on the board or how to footnote, you know, how to, how to, how to cite a source in a footnote. Um, so I, and that's where my mind, so I, so I said, it's got to be a long range goal. We, we really should seriously look at this. And, and we should have, we, we should have you, you know, take a look and, and wonder what is the best way to go at this point. Um, I understand it's, it, it's a, it's a huge commitment by a community. Um, I've been in districts and, and have done new builds, um, or at least partially made it through, just to never stayed there long enough to open the new building. And, and it's, it's no picnic. You can ask, uh, you know, you can ask, uh, you can ask Greylock, you can ask Wacona, um, you can even ask the, the people at Taconic. It is, it's not fun to go through, but the end result is, is really servicing kids. And I think Lennox, Lennox has the passion for their students and for their kids. I think it would be neglectful if I didn't begin to draw attention to it. It is on the long range goal. It would be scary if I put it on the short range goal. But, um, but I, I do think there, you know, there, there's some rewards and, and I mean, we can't think that that building's going to last forever.
No, I, you know,
Now, maybe ten years from now, something will happen, but.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just, um, Taconic was fifty years old. We're twenty-two years old, twenty-three years old. Yeah, no, I understand that. I just, Taconic was 50 years old. We're 22 years old, 23 years old, maybe. And it's, it's hard to go.
Unfortunately, the, the, the major classrooms we use and the major spaces we use with kids is, is still old. And, and I, I mean, I, I gotta hand it to Jeff and Nick and Peyton and Dom and Dale and Mike, they doing a tremendous job making that school look great. And while I have your attention, I want to give a shout out to Anna Van Lincoln, who during, during our, our remote season, she painted just about the entire building. You know, it was, it was a good way to keep her employed, and it was a great benefit to our kids coming back to a brand-new space. Real fresh look.
Yeah. Well, I definitely, you know, I definitely want to get the discussion about upgrading some of the facilities within the existing building moving, because Tim had it moving back in 2018.
It was, it was moving, and, and that would buy us some space. It really was.
I, I don't think his plan was going to buy more classroom space, except in science classrooms. But in the, within the context, maybe there's a way of looking at, at this, but the town's got police and fire needs for structure and other things, so we've, we have to be cognizant. We definitely want to bring our stuff up, up to, I mean, Francie may have been a student in those classrooms in 66. And.
I think I saw her name scratched into a window, so.
Yeah, I don't think so. But I, we definitely do want to keep this. And I don't even, I don't even want some of it to be really long-range. I want it to be relatively speaking, short-range. To talk about a new structure. I had a little big swallow on that.
I tell the kids to dream big, so I'm gonna dream big.
Okay.
Want to step out there.
All right. Any other questions on any of this budget? So Mike Jackson is next in instructional technology.
I'm just trying to get to my notes. I don't know if I have any questions, but I, I guess I would say I do, he commented in program concerns, said, he put, the team puts a lot of effort into culling what ideas to bring forward and follow up on, and similar to what Bob Munch said, I, I applaud the technology team for their work. And I appreciated Mike listing all the people who are working behind the scenes on the technology aspect, answering questions, and it does sound like a great team that was pulled together for this very unprecedented time.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, this is with regard to, to the instructional technology team and to Mr. Jackson in particular. Would, as everyone knows, and I don't, I don't want to replow the field of last spring, as everyone knows, we were basically thrown into the lake and told to swim on very short notice with the, with the advent of COVID-19 and the fact that the schools across the Commonwealth closed. Over the summer, and this is, this is pertinent to what Mr. Remmler was asking before, over the summer, the district, along with seven other districts in Berkshire County, acquired Canvas, and I want to give a, a, a real commendation here, if I could, to the leadership that Mr. Jackson has shown in the district in terms of getting that up and running in terms of providing core skills to staff members in the use of, of Canvas. His support by participation in the, in the Berkshire Regional Learning Initiative, excuse me, Remote Learning Initiative and to the district is really remarkable, and I think it's sort of like when you turn the lights on and they work, people don't think about how complicated everything is to get that to happen, and the, the reliance that we've come to, to have on IT and to the fact that it is as reliable as it is is in great part due to Mr. Jackson. So I, I simply want to acknowledge that as we're talking about the secondary budget, but this is applicable to the whole system, obviously. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yeah, we're very fortunate to have quite a strong faculty in all areas, and Mike has been enormously supportive of every member of that faculty to make sure things operate properly. Okay, math with Mr. Pugh. Any questions for David? Or anything David wants to add?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask about just the, the status of the laptop carts and, and, and smartboards and how we feel. You know, are, are we going, uh, uh, in the, oh my God. Are we progressing at, at a rate with those which, you know, that, that you're happy with?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I absolutely think so. I mean, we are on a very positive trajectory as far as technology in our department. Certainly COVID threw a major twist and everything, but Mike has assured me that we'll have, and we have had laptops available for the required MCAS testing in the past. I see us moving forward with the technology and more accessibility across the math department. Smartboards, Matt Godfrey and I have been using smartboards this year. I will tell you personally and professionally that the smartboard is most definitely the tool of choice in teaching student synchronicity in class and at home. It's a marvelous tool. I'm probably using one, one hundredth of what it's capable of, and it's been absolutely phenomenal. So I know there's a support for trying to get two smartboards into the middle school classrooms for Mrs. Sorentino and Mrs. Jerry, who are interested in doing that. But I can't say enough, and it's, so again, I, coming out of COVID, I see us still moving in a positive trajectory.
And I can say that David was a, an early adopter of smartboards back when he was in Richmond and has been using them effectively for years, so. Keep it going.
And, and this is advanced technology smartboards compared to what Dave started on. These are not the smartboards that use the whiteboard markers. These, these are basically the Dr. Phil video screen wall that you can just write on, and you'll, you know, with your hand, you can, there's tools you can use. There's screen capture. You just, instead of cleaning the board, you swipe the board and it's saved, and it can be loaded right onto Canvas, and it's one more reason why I think we would keep Canvas as a teaching and learning platform.
Any other question, David? Okay, the next department appears to be middle school. And I believe, Michael, any questions for Mike? Hope it's a large budget. Okay, moving on then, let's go to.
I'm just looking to see if I had, I'm flipping my pages. They're, they're digital, just to see if I had any anything, but I don't, I don't see anything.
Okay. Then next is music with Jonathan Cade. Any questions for Jonathan?
I, I'd just like to make a comment that I, I think that music during this period, especially band, it, it's an incredibly difficult time where you know, musicians want to play with other musicians, and, and I would just like to commend Mr. Cade for his efforts, for keeping his students interested and engaged during this period.
Thank you very much. If I could just say one thing, I'd like to make a quick announcement that we had one student, Piper Maximilian, was selected for the All-State Chorus in the last week, and the All-Virtual Festival this year, and I'm super excited she's able to do that this year. So congratulations, Piper.
Is, is that something, Jonathan, that will be able to be posted, so if people want to watch the?
It will be. They're doing, it's all virtual, so they're gonna be combining the kids' parts together. It would be a virtual performance, a stream performance at some point. I don't have the dates for that yet, but I will share that when I do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for Jonathan? Okay, let's move on then to whatever the next one is, physical education, which is Jeannie T's deal again.
I had a question on the program concerns with the, I think it'd probably end up under capital. The, talking about the showers, the showers in the girls' locker rooms do not have curtains, and the boys' locker room does not have individual showers. And I wondered as, like, in looking at that space, are showers something, I think I asked this a couple of years ago even, I guess I'm wondering how frequently they are something that would be used, or how much of a necessity we think the showers are, or what, in terms of planning to upgrade that area, the lockers, and I know that, I feel like I heard that girls do would like, some girls would like to have more private space to change, but I don't know if, and so I wondered if that could come at the expense of the showers, and I'm wondering about if showers are something that have to be there, or.
Mike, did you want to answer, or should I just mention? Pardon?
I think I answered it in the instructional line with the long-term goal. That's, that's part of the design. I, I mean, our, the design is totally outdated, and, and it will be very expensive to change. It is an area of concern as we have, you know, gender fluidity and diversity within our, our student body that we make, you know, the locker room a safe place for all students, and, you know, the, the, this, this design right now where the boys' locker room has the, you know, shower room, so to speak, with no privacy, and the girls have individuals, but we have no, we, when we add curtains, we, we end up having trouble with supervision. We have trouble with cleaning those curtains and, and keeping it a healthy environment without major improvements coming to the physical plant. So again, it's, it's one more department on top of science that we're, we're beginning to say you know, it's old and worn out, and how do we replace it?
And those would have been, Francie, that would have also been part of the building that you went to. Yeah.
Yeah, they're basically user-changing rooms now. Didn't work when I was there.
I guess my, my question was, I don't know how many students are, when I went to high school and observation of my girls, nobody ever used the showers, so I wonder if making them changing spaces and not showers is feasible. That was my question.
Yeah, it used to be mandatory to take a shower, but no other use for changing rooms, and I think that's probably the right way to go. You can have one shower, and then change to rest through changing rooms.
Well, I will say as somebody that, you know, was a former PE and, and been coaching a lot and all that, I see a lot more of, you know, my basketball guys might take a shower after practice because they're gonna stick around for the girls' game. You know, things, things along those lines. So I have, I have seen the showers used a lot more in the boys' side after practices than I have seen really things during the school day.
And I see Mr. Pugh has his hand up.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, you know, for a whole host of reasons, I, for what everybody said, you know, privacy is definitely, there's a lack thereof, and we must remember that we have, you know, for different athletics, we'll have seventh graders in that, that area changing with seniors for different sports. We also, you know, I need an area for officials during halftime of basketball games, providing them a nice, clean space where they can have privacy away from the players. And also, it's, it's a place for our, our visitors to come visit us and providing them the safety and space to that we would want them to have. So certainly a part of our long-range plan, but it is something that's very much needed. I've looked at separating changing times for the younger athletes and the older athletes, just to give them more privacy. So, yeah, it's definitely a piece of our building that is outdated and, and needs to be transformed to meet present-day needs for our kids.
Okay, any other questions on the health budget?
Can, can I just express some frustration here for a second?
Yep.
I, I find it hard to believe that we can't keep shower curtains clean. Number one, because they can, you can wash them periodically. And number two, you, you can't come up with something that's, you know, you know, here, here we have a situation where there are no curtains, and there's no privacy, and now we're worried about a supervision on something opaque. So can't you put something that's translucent in there and, and then wash it periodically? I, I just, I'm just expressing my frustration, and I, and, and I must admit, I've not been in any of these facilities. I've not toured them, so I really can't comment, and I could just be, you know, talking off the cuff here, but it seems like it's soluble. So I'll leave, and, and I'm not asking for an answer tonight, obviously. You shouldn't put some more thought into it.
I think, I mean, Jeannie might, might know more realistically how many, but the way they design those showers is it's double-sided curtains. So, so you, you need two curtains for each shower, and I want to say there's probably 20 showers, 25 showers, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, I've never counted them up.
And I know years ago they had them, but it, you know, it's a source of mold because there's no ventilation in either locker room.
And you gotta get them to drink correctly first.
I mean, there's no exhaust fan like you would even in a house. The, the, fortunately, the girls' locker room has windows. The boys' locker room doesn't even have windows. It, it, it's problematic. I mean, yeah, we could wash them, but how do you add that to someone's list every night when we've cut back half a custodian? I want to say, you know, 10, eight or 10 years ago.
And one thing that came up earlier, or came to mind earlier, is that we could arrange a school committee because not everybody gets to see the buildings or know them, and so I, I know that in the past, there used to be annual school committee tours of both buildings, so when it's safe or wearing masks, so that, that can also be another great source of information for the school committee, and I know that was something that was done in the past.
Absolutely.
A way to understand, continue to get a full picture of, of the school's needs.
Yeah, I think for that aspect, we'd have to do it at a time when the kids weren't at sports or anything. We'd have, but I agree, because I, I don't believe that I've ever been, I may have been in the boys' locker room at one time, but I'm not even sure that it's, so I haven't seen that aspect of the building. I've seen most of the rest of it, but not that, so I think, I think it's a good idea that we have a tour perhaps sometime. So I think, I think it's a good idea that we have a tour perhaps sometime.
It might be smart to include the town manager as well because I think this would go under capital expenditure. So he would have a sense in working with Melissa of the, you know, the two of them do a great job of laying out priorities over the years and knowing, so we, we could make sure we include Chris, and I don't know how often Melissa's able to get over there, but obviously she would likely be included.
You're right about that, Molly, depending on what we, on what we plan to do. Because there's school building needs committee versus the, versus just capital expenditures. If, if we could redo the bathrooms in the high school and redo the locker rooms and it was, and it was, we could do it for $300,000, then we could do that as capital expenditures some year. But I don't, it sounds like the locker rooms might, to bring them up to speed, so there's perhaps ventilation and other things, sounds like we might be talking about a much bigger expenditure for, for those parts.
Those spaces, yes.
And that would be like the mass school building, I forget MS.
Well, it, it would start with us having a school building needs group to kind of assess what our needs are and, and then trying to get in line. We know we can't do roofs until 30 years. So we got another eight years to wait on roofs. Morris will come a couple of years before that. And that's assuming we get they, I don't know that if that's automatic or not, but, but I know that the permanent building committee operates on other town buildings and we would be operating on school buildings in whatever fashion we've got to propose. Unless it's just going to be capital some year for some aspects of it. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Jeannie, David, everyone who's weighed in on that, Mike. Okay, then we've got science, which is technology engineering, which is Brooke. Any questions for Brooke or any comments Brooke wants to make?
No, I just, I will point out, you know, that it has been asked a couple of times now about chemical storage and making sure that we get something done for that. So I, you know, this is another one of those things that I think we need to pay a little bit of attention to.
Yeah, um, I, I want to say thank you to Chief Chris O'Brien. We have been partnering with him to really go through our high school lab spaces, in particular, our, our lab supply rooms. And Chris was able to partner us with Mast D E P. And we had a, a large amount of our chemicals disposed of. We still have issues where our, our current storage cabinets should be vented and they are not vented properly. And we do have other chemicals that we acquired probably in, in, in the 60s and 70s that have just been sitting in our, our lab closets that we need to properly dispose of. But this was something that Mike and I have talked a lot about and we connected with Melissa and Dr. Cameron on this as well. And kind of COVID popped up. And so we're, we're hoping to continue our work with Chief O'Brien.
The DEP, along with Chief O'Brien, was partnering with a, a, a school, a college in order to have college interns come and, and go to learn the ropes of disposing chemicals. And COVID ended up interrupting that, that process because we would have continued again this fall. And, and I imagine all, you know, along with Chief O'Brien, I know he is straight out answering calls. And hopefully we can get some more work done this summer.
Yeah, I had this kind of bookmarked this page because of the whole discussion about the science remodeling. And I'm wondering, I mean, we're not going to get to adding space and, and doing the full potential build out to make the classrooms larger and whatever. But I'm wondering on some of these things like the, the fume hood, the greenhouse, the, the things that aren't working and haven't worked for maybe 30 years, if there's a short term, if, if it, if it's practical to do in the short term to get those things fixed and workable for the, until such times we might be able to, to actually do the full, a full remodeling.
I believe that Tim Lee met with Mike and, and the science department. And we looked at those things. The lab benches that we have in the high school, I believe were donated by a Catholic school, probably in the 60s. And many of them are broken and there's no storage within the space. The sinks are also extremely small to be able to do any kind of lab work. It, it's almost impossible. And so we looked at even trying to look at the lab benches. But one of the things that we considered was any change that we made would, would potentially trigger kind of code things to come in for all of the plumbing or for all of the electrical to each of those benches. And so that's when Mr. Lee felt as though we should look at this from a, a larger scale and just see what we were doing. Because even fixing a fume hood is as many thousand dollars. Even just adding one sink is several thousand dollars.
Well, I know that, Brooke, but if, if we, if, if, let's just say we, we couldn't, we, we couldn't get a building, the full renovation done for five years. And I, five might be optimistic. I don't really have a clue on that. Would it make sense for us to try to get new lab tables and, and try to get some of this? Even if it is thousands of dollars for each, each piece? Mike or Brooke or somebody?
Again, I, I want to side with Brooke on, as you know, when you think you're going to change out your bathtub and then the building inspector signs off on something and sees another problem, if you're doing a small reno in your house. I think as soon as we open up anything that's there, it may trigger code infractions that would take us out of being grandfathered in to passing inspection as we do every year. One thing I think of right off the bat is our, our emergency showers have no drains. Our eye wash stations have no drains. They would pour the water on the floor when needed. I think if we were to replace a lab bench and have a plumber come in, they're kind of going to look at that and go, yeah, but you need to install a drain there, which means digging up a concrete floor, which is in across, you know, what's under the science rooms is a crawl space that actually should be sealed and not dirt. You know, from all the different constructions we've had throughout my stay at Lennox, I've heard different people say, we need, you know, three mil plastic over that dirt that's underneath the foundation. So we don't want to drill a new drain hole that wouldn't be sealed as well as everything else. I, I, I mean, I think we would be, you know, we're wise to look at the exhaust fans. And, you know, I can say all the exhaust fans are working because Mike Tire worked on that with Jeff Ano. Tying in the chemical storage to part of that exhaust, I, you know, that's something that probably Mike Tire could, could complete for us. And, you know, for, for a short-term goal and not a major expense. But I, I'm afraid if we start working on the gas line and the plumbing that, that are, you know, part of those lab tables, we would be opening up a can of worms. I think Tim was wise to say pause, you know?
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, this is all informational for me and, and, but it almost means that we've got to work quick, more quickly. And I don't know how that's going to be possible. That's all.
That's why I started adding it to the budget book, a long-term goal.
Oh, yeah, I mentioned it at a town meeting three years ago.
Yeah.
That it was coming, but I didn't know really when it was coming. And then we've had three years with, without the superintendency being kind of nailed down, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll plan for Molly's tour and then be able to look at all this stuff.
Okay.
But I, I think I, yeah, and I think that this is obviously an important area and it seems like an area to move forward in a smart way. And may, you know, have, so maybe, maybe there will be more money than we anticipate in coming years to be able to keep. I think it's important to keep this as a priority because when I was looking through the budget, this jumped out at me as, as probably the highest priority that we keep in mind, so.
Now, David, do you still have your hand raised? David?
No, I don't.
You can lower it then.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it went down.
No, that's okay. Just kidding around. Anything else, anything else for science and technology with Brooke?
I do want to commend our new hire that replaced Kyle Zinchuk, Caroline Altieri. I think it's a, it's a very tough year to start where most of our meetings are on Zoom and people don't get to see face to face. So I just want to give her a shout out because she quickly became one of us at Lennox, even, even keeping her social distance. Not easy being new.
Okay, then let's move on to social studies, which is Kelly Corey Katie. Any, any questions from the committee on? Any aspect of social studies? I did have a question once I figure out my page numbers. That's 41, 42. Think my question was, so the state requirement for civics is now being met in ninth grade?
No, we are actually going to be tackling it in the 10th grade.
Oh, 10th grade, okay.
Yep. So our US history sequence is 10th and 11th grade. And we felt that the civics requirement that's mandated now in the, the civics project that goes along with that would fit best with the 10th grade curriculum, along with, of course, the current eighth grade mandate.
Yeah, I think I had it in, in ninth or 10th grade when I was in high school, which was a long time ago. Yeah, you just said in the, in the, right up here, eighth grade civics. So that's why I thought that maybe that was happening there.
Right, we, we currently do have it going in both grade levels, eighth and 10th grade. But it's brand new for 10th grade. So she hasn't quite figured out the civics project the way Beth Gray figured out for eighth grade by going to the Harvard program. So we had that pretty under control last year. This year is the first year it's been really introduced into the 10th grade. And of course, with COVID, it's making the implementation of that civics project a little tricky. But Sarah Hamilton is doing an excellent job, really stepping up and working with other teachers throughout Berkshire County, trying to do a joint Berkshire County civics project for that current 10th grade. So I have to really give a shout out to Sarah because she, she didn't hesitate. She just picked up that ball and ran with it. So we're really proud of her.
Okay, so under program concerns, there was expand course offerings to meet a wider range of interests, abilities and identified needs. And, you know, knowing the space concerns in the building and all, when we talk about expanding course offerings, does that, are they, are they all offered at the same time? Is, or are some things offered one year, some another? How does?
We tried to stagger, especially with the upper level electives that one would be offered maybe in the fall of one year and then the spring. It, so we tried to stagger it between the fall and spring semester and also try to stagger it between the years. So maybe that we have, like, we might have, I'm trying to look at our offerings this year. So maybe it won't be history of the Middle East or economics. It would rotate for the following year. We're trying to match the whole pathway system that Mike was talking about with Desi, trying to come up with something that would be really useful for our students to also be able to carry over into BCC credits. So that's why it's one of our things that we're really looking at as an entire department. But we would have to rotate it because as you can see, we also have a space concern of sharing the classroom.
Right, right. Exactly. That's why I was wondering about whether it just meant more classes the kid could take it at one time or if you just did the staggering, so.
Aggreging and then we, we try to rotate so that the juniors and seniors, if, 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 you know, they get it in junior year, they get something different in senior year.
Any other questions for Kelly or Mike on social studies? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Duffin Theater. Thank you, Kelly. Stefan Billups and Mike Knabell, any questions for, for either Mr. Billups or Mr. Knabell on this area?
I was curious to hear more about the, the three bullets under program concerns. My first question was, I don't know the Duffin, other than having been there as a, like, in the audience, like where the lesser used portion is. And then I was curious to know more also about the, the second bullet, which is the ending of local TV program, programming. And then hear a little more also about the, the third bullet as well, so.
Yeah, and those were areas that I had questions also, Molly. So thanks for bringing them up.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Well, a lot of this kind of overlaps what Al Sal had for his budget proposal. And being so new to the theater and not having actually managed to show, I just went through what he did, what he had written down and talked to Al, spoke with Al about it. And I, I agreed with a lot of the stuff that he already had there. So in terms of, of the unused space, it's, I'm talking about the unused space in the lobby. And it's technically used, people can stand there, but it, it could be used. When you come through the, the lobby doors, right to the right, there's that little kind of cubby there. It could be used for a couple or maybe three even ISO booths that would benefit Ben's program with his kids would allow for independent study for, for kids that want to work on videos or audio programs or audio, audio projects that they're working on and expand space without actually expanding space. Does that answer your question?
How much are ISO booths? I, I guess I think I've seen one image maybe of an ISO booth on a, on a ad or something that came up. And I'm wondering, is that, is that what an ISO booth is?
Maybe, I'm not sure what you saw, but the prices vary. It depends on what, which vendor you use. And since this is, is a, it's a program concern and it's also a long-term proposal. So it's not something that we would be looking at doing right away. And as soon as we start talking about that, that's when I would get serious about getting prices and figuring out exactly which booths we would use and all that.
That makes, that makes sense.
Absolutely.
So I was wondering about the third bullet and, and what that meant. Would like some fresh views on budgetary swing of drama arts earmark funds to ease stress of in-house productions and enhance ambitions. I, I wasn't sure what that actually was meaning.
Again, this is a little bit of a flowover from, or overflow rather, from Al Sal. And coming in fresh and new, I had to depend on his, his guidance on a lot of things that I was doing. And we talked about some of the stuff that he, the challenges he had to, to face in terms of budget. And there, we'd like to see something in the theater. We'd like to see something where we can have a, a more of a budget to, to kind of enhance the program for students who might be team members and bringing in tech people. And there, there is a, a, a path for tech people per show. In the contractors, if we have tech people, they get paid fifty dollars an hour and that kind of thing. But just more, more of a focus on increasing the, the warm bodies that actually make the shows happen.
Okay.
And Molly, you had something, a question about the second bullet point?
Yeah, I was curious to hear more about it.
Well, the FCC is, has changed some rules and it's, it's a really deep read to go through all the information. Suffice to say that the local governments don't have the same control over how programming is going to be formatted and even released. And that may affect us being able to live stream through local broadcasting, through our local public broadcasting here. And because of that, we're really looking at a shift to more recent developments in technology that people are using. So Facebook's live streaming, Google streaming and the such. And so I'm really trying to outfit the theater to make sure we're prepared for that kind of thing, especially with the pandemic. Are we going to be fully open? Are we going to be half open? But it would be great either way to be able to offer, as Mr. Cannibal mentioned earlier in the meeting, to offer people at home the opportunity to see what's happening on stage, whether it's paid or not, depending on if it's a student production, or if it's a production that somebody rented out the theater for. It just gives us the ability to stream and not be affected by whatever the FCC decides to do. Last year, they actually changed the, the frequencies that stations were using. And the stations were actually changing frequencies very frequently. So people who do over the air antennas, they had to re-scan regularly to make sure they can find what station that they have. It hasn't really affected Massachusetts as much, but what, what happens if it does? So we want to plan for that and be able to, to have an alternative and maybe even phase out having to use public television altogether.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions regarding the Duffin Theater?
I'd just like to, you know, I know Mike gave a shout out to Caroline, but you know, Stefan has done the same type of thing, you got to jump in right in. You know, he's done some great things helping out, done some yoga videos for Genie as he's put together a couple, we did a staff thing right before the holidays for kids, you know, just kind of everybody wishing him a good break. He's in the midst right now of organizing with our mid-school student council on a virtual talent show. And he's just jumped right in, he's doing a great job, so just wanted to give him a quick little shout out.
Okay, great.
Thank you, I did see that holiday video and that was really nice as my girls were watching it.
Okay, world language with Anne Marie Rodriguez. Any questions for Anne Marie? The aspect of her budget. I did have a question on page forty-eight, which is the first page, I believe. There was under the second paragraph, while the study of some world, same world language for two years is required for graduation, the department strongly encourages students to continue with their language studies through the AP level. I'm just wondering like what first, again, this is off the top of my head and, and you may not have this information off the top of your heads, but about how many students continue on to level three or four of a language go and go past the two-year minimum?
Mike, Anne Marie is not in the attending list.
We, we lost her?
Yeah.
Yeah, she was there earlier.
I'll, I'll field that question. It, you know, it varies from year to year, it's, it, it's, you know, when there's a solid, when there's a large cohort, you know, there's a good section that takes it all the way to AP. We have seen, you know, we, we actually changed the way we introduce French to students at the sixth grade level to, to, and, and that has worked at building back a strong AP French program, AP Latin program and AP Spanish program. But it still is about, I want to say it's less than it was back in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen. And we continue to have, you know, faculty discussions about, you know, the career pathways because as we offer more science, kids want science, math, they want the STEM, they want the STEAM curriculum, they want to stay in art. And, and they have to make choices and unfortunately, they do have to make choices and unfortunately, you know, they have to take an English, a math and a science and a social studies and, and language becomes an equal elective, you know, as band art and wood shop. You know, we would, we would hope that there was an easy way to, to keep them there and we do everything in our schedule to make it happen for them.
Mr. Cannibal, thank you for, can you hear me now? I've been trying to
Yep, yep.
Be heard, I guess I was muted and, and, and I thank you for responding to that. I also, I wanted to share that everything that Mr. Cannibal just said is absolutely true. But I also want to share that when I joined Lennox, some, oh my goodness, two thousand four, two thousand and five, we didn't have a language requirement for all students for graduation. Many students took foreign language, but not all students needed it to graduate from the school. Now we have a two-year language requirement. Colleges, we're seeing more and more want three to four years of a world language, of the same world language. And honestly, there were times when students would double up on languages, so it wasn't unusual to have somebody take four years of high school language in addition to our middle school program and then also take Latin. And now that we're seeing, or also take French or some, you know, double up on the languages. I'm sorry if that was unclear, but what we're seeing now is that colleges are looking to have three and four years of a college, of a high school language. But we as a department, regardless of whether or not students are going on to a college or we're looking at career pathways for them, we need to prepare all students for a global economy. So the reality is that our program is growing. Certainly, the pandemic has made that a little bit more difficult in terms of trying to keep our students engaged and be sure we're meeting our students' needs. I'm not sure that's really answering your question, but most of that I attribute to working with highly qualified faculty and the leadership that we get from Mr. Cannibal, Mr. Cogsmann, all of you. So I think the numbers in middle school in a traditional pathway, most of our seventh and eighth grade students that have completed the program successfully will go on to Spanish III. And then as Mr. Cannibal so clearly delineated, it becomes more and more competitive as students get into the higher grades. And that's because of competing courses and having a student-driven schedule where students want to take everything that they can. It requires us to be creative and try to come up with other ways of engaging students and that's something that we've been working on diligently more recently.
Okay, I had another question, Anne Marie. Somewhere or other I read here something about the CMLL, the online language course. Do you take any? And I know that's something that Sam Harv has spoken about for years and I, and I see it mentioned here, but I didn't see anything in the budget about it, so I wasn't sure whether we own it or how that gets covered.
So it's my understanding, and I've been asking this question a little bit more frequently, more often lately than in the past, now that I'm department chair. This is in every other year expenses, I understand it. So what we paid last year, we're, we're, or what we paid this year, we're all set for next year, but we're going to need to budget it for the following year.
Okay, and my, my last question, and there may be others from other people was, under your program concerns, you mentioned scheduling intervention at the same time as world language classes in the middle school makes it difficult for some students to begin language study. And, you know, and I know other middle schools do intervention the same way, they, it comes away from from language and so kids don't. And I don't, I don't have a clue on how that could happen differently and the kids getting the intervention, need the intervention undoubtedly in the areas they're getting it, but it's, it does seem like a potential equity issue in terms of access to the full, to your full program certainly. And I just, I have no clue on how to address it, but I just want to acknowledge that you put it in there.
Well, I appreciate you saying that because in a perfect world, students will come into our middle school program in sixth grade, go through seventh and eighth grade program, have success with that and then move into the high school levels, the higher levels in high school. But that's not for everybody and not all students who come to the middle school join us in the sixth grade. For example, it's not unusual for an eighth grade student to join us from out of district. And we have no place to put them in the schedule except for eighth grade Spanish. And so we're working with guidance to come up with ways to make sure that when students are placed in that level, that they are indeed having their level in needs appropriately met. And if not, perhaps that means talking about how can we assist that student by moving them into a different level Spanish, even though they're an eighth grade student.
So maybe a sixth or seventh grade class, if that?
If the schedule would allow for that.
Right.
Because of so many other issues, that's not always the case. We would never deny the student the opportunity to be there, but in my mind, that's not always addressing that student's particular need. So they may need to have more language the following year to catch up. Or you brought up the language lab and that's an opportunity where students can over the summer make up for where they might have missed during the academic year.
And, and in the language lab, do we have kids taking lots of different languages other than the ones you offer?
We, we actually, when you ask that question, you mean in terms of French, Spanish and Latin?
Right, I mean, you offer those.
Right, so we offer those and those are part of the graduation requirement.
Right.
So the language lab is not used for students to meet their graduation requirement, but instead, it's not unusual for a student who may have Asian, an Asian background or an Italian or Russian background and they want to learn that language because it's part of their heritage.
Okay.
So we really do address some of those needs, those are for elective credit. And, you know, and if a student has a gap in their schedule, say they have a half of a year where they have two days a week that they're, they find a, an opening in their schedule, they may ask to come into language lab then, so. It gives all students the opportunity to take additional language.
Any other questions for Senora Rodriguez?
I just, I'm confused by something. And I apologize. So is there a, so there, there is a high school graduation requirement in languages?
Yes.
But we don't offer any introductory courses in the high school?
Oh, we do, absolutely we do, I'm sorry. So I, I spoke about the traditional pathway where students come to Lennox, LMMHS as a sixth grader and those are the opportunities we provide to them, to all of those students as a sixth, as middle school students going on to high school. If a student came in as an 11th grader, we would absolutely offer them French one, Latin one, Spanish one. In fact, we would have to do that because if they've not met their language requirement as requ, well, that Lennox requires for graduation, but furthermore, Mass Core would like to see at least two years of a language requirement. So yes, definitely, I'm sorry if I misled you with that. I was speaking about the traditional mid-school, moving on to the high school pathway.
Any further questions for Senora Rodriguez?
Mary Cherry has her hand up in attendees. I, I think it may have gone up during.
Oh, and somebody else too, I gotta see who. Okay. Mary, go ahead. Maybe I gotta make you, give you permission, or maybe somebody has.
Hi, can you hear me now?
We can.
Great, I just wanted to address the intervention block for world languages, I just happen to be on here and not as a department chair, but as an frequent observer. So I, when, that used to be the case that world languages and foreign, and intervention blocks competed every year in the middle school schedule. We were able to get that down to just sixth grade and while it's still a problem that, you know, sixth graders can either be in intervention or in world languages. We, we had alleviated that problem in the seventh and eighth grade with the personalized learning block that we instituted. I don't know if we're in our fourth year of that or our third year of that, I'd have to think back. It was when I arrived at, back from Morris to LMMHS. So, and we do still have that problem in sixth grade. Students who we'd like to receive intervention and for one reason or another, they opt for foreign language or, you know, so it is still a problem, but it's not as prevalent as a problem as it used to be.
Well, that, that's really good to know, because I was thinking it was throughout and I was thinking that's a big, potentially a big loss for some of the kids.
No, that, what Mary is saying is, is absolutely true. The intervention that I was referring to was the students that are in eighth grade that really aren't prepared for that level of Spanish because they've come from a different district and we need to be more cognizant of that and how to address those students' needs by putting them into an appropriately appropriate Spanish or French class for them. And having said that, I should bring up that in recent years, we've introduced Latin to assist with that, so in, in the past, students started Latin in high school and now we've been fortunate to offer Latin one to students in the middle school. And Mr. Cannibal, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking it's only been eighth grade, but I've only been department chair this year.
We, there was, there was one year in order to help us with our interventions for students that, that were not in the intervention block, we were able to create a cohort of seventh grade Latin students and, and we did a seventh and eighth grade, then it became eighth grade. Mainly because we'd be asking Ms. Bear to teach too much, she would fill her schedule. If we, but I'm sure we have the interest there and, and if, you know, the luck of the schedule and the luck of her high school cohorts being small enough, we, we definitely would place her back into the middle school. In order to reduce class size for us to, to be able to target other students.
Okay, great. Thank you, Anne Marie.
Thank you for having me.
Well, we're always delighted. And now we have the library audio visual program with Alexis Brown Kennedy.
I, I was gonna comment that it does seem like over the years that the library, under the short range and in her write-up, it talks about how the library is a busy place and I think it is a really valued, extremely valued resource for the students, so just wanted to echo that in my observations over the years as a school committee member and as a parent, so. You know, hopefully there is funds to make sure there's adequate supervision in that space because the students value it.
And I noticed And I noticed the, it says before the close of FY 2021, the library furniture will be updated. So is that still going forward?
Yeah, so we hope that that's gonna go forward. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. So this has been such an unusual year in so many ways for so many people. But certainly the library program has been, you know, really had sort of a, a major change to its overall programming. But the, I think the one benefit that perhaps is coming out of this is that when I met with Dr. Cameron and Melissa Falkowski and Mike Knibl, because I'm not acting primarily in my role as librarian, a lot of the monies that would be typically going towards book requests for students or for new curriculum for teachers is not being used that way. And so the opportunity there is to take those funds and, and put them towards furniture purchases. So that's what we're working on now. So that's the plan. So hopefully, and this also, if you remember, the furniture discussion has been kind of a long one. I think, I think it's been about five years maybe. Yeah, so, so I guess if anything, if, if by the end of this fiscal year, we're able to outfit the library with new furniture, I think that would be positive for the program long-term. So we are working towards that goal. You know, the ink, nothing has been finalized yet, but that is the plan.
Okay. Any other questions for Alexis while she's on? Thank you, Alexis and Melissa for picking up the, all the work you're doing with technology and support for the students.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Yeah, there are also ad hoc tutors for some of our students as well. So they, they are definitely filling, filling some gaps. And I appreciate how they're extending themselves.
Very good.
Bob, I saw that Nurstries raised her hand on the attendees list.
Go ahead, Jen, if, if somebody hasn't given you permission, I'll try to do it. Jen?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I just, I just wanted to again, thank Alexis and Melissa for all of their assistance with the technology. It's been a huge support for all of us at the school. But especially some of us that aren't necessarily the educators. But to be able to get the communications out to families and the communications out to the faculty and really having that tech help and having access to Melissa and Alexis during the school day to really get that, those communications out to families have been, has been wonderful. And I can't thank them enough for their assistance.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, moving on, we've got the guidance career education with David, David Hilfinger. Are there any questions with respect to guidance?
So am I reading it right here? It says the behavioral consultant has been reduced? Is that what our bullet slide said? Behavioral consultant temporary one-year reduction?
Yes, the pandemic relief grants focus, a portion of the funding has to be focused on mental health and social emotional learning. So this, it's a small amount. I think it was about $5,000 for the counselor to work with staff and students. But that's a perfect expense that can be moved to the grant for this next year. But it is a temporary one-year move. It'll be back in the following year. So in '23, it will show up again.
Any other questions on, on that budget? Okay, moving on to athletics. David. You're back.
Let's see, yes, I am. Boy, what a night. And I agree with one of the school committee members in saying that this is a night, and I had mentioned this a few weeks back. It's a night that the chairs and other staff at our school get to kind of highlight our, our years and what's going well. So I too am on the same page. You know, it's, it's a, one thing I really opened my eyes as athletic director when I took over was how much our, our athletes and coaches, I, I did coach soccer and softball. But how much their day is, continues after the school day at 2:30? Literally another half of the day occurs for a lot of our athletes getting home on a bus from a away game at nine o'clock. And we've spent, you know, we've got a, a school committee, and I thank you for your continued support to make that second half of the day happen. You know, when I last met with you, we're coming off a fall season. And, you know, within the fall and winter last year, we had 13 league titles slash Western Mass titles slash state championships. Coach Teasdale, you know, we didn't think at the time, of course, we got a season coming up. But to win a state title last fall in, in cross-country running for the girls and a double Western Mass championship. And then the girls went on, a lot of the same girls went on to win a state title Nordic skiing. It was really just an amazing year. It was an amazing time to watch our kids. And it's been a real struggle this year balancing safety and wanting those memories to continue on our athletic field. So it's been a very trying year for me, the admin team, the coaches. I must, I must commend the, the coaches we have and their willingness to coach during the seasons. Our coaches have stepped up and say, yeah, I'll do what it takes to make a season happen. As, as we know, we all know the importance of the athletic seasons and what it means for our kids. Some of the changes since I took over is I very much have, just recently, I streamlined the communication on a Canvas page, athletic Canvas page, working with our great tech team, as mentioned a number of times tonight. If you click on athletics on our school webpage, it'll take you to a Canvas page I've set up that will communicate everything you need to know about athletics, calendar and future, highlights, schedules of games, sign-ups for sports, announcements and so forth. So it's gonna be a one, one place, shopping place for our, our users of Canvas and the community to be able to, to see what's going on and get their kids registered for sports. Another thing I've, I've done since taken over, and it'll help with Gendry's and Brian Cogswell and the coaches is I've really streamlined the registration process with Family ID. There's a lot of paperwork passing around between the different entities. But we've, I've been able to set it up on Family ID where we're all able to communicate each other on the same electronic page without actually seeing each other in person, which is very helpful in our busy days. We spent a great deal of money over the last year on field maintenance with the closure of sports. We've invested considerable money into our baseball field. We've spent some money on our softball field. We spent some money resetting our, our soccer fields, parts of them. You know, Melissa and Bill Gop and, and other entities were certainly in agreement that this was the time to get some of our needed repairs done while the fields weren't being used. As you see in the budget, you know, last year, we, I created a plan to, to have uniforms replaced on a, on a, on a cycle we missed last year. So basically that cycle with basketball, cross-country and running and crew will take care of those uniforms this fall. A very important note that Melissa and I will certainly be in close contact with each other over the course of next year is transportation costs. Recently, it was just agreed upon within District 1 ADs. You know, we made a move, at least a recommendation as ADs last year to try to join the Pioneer Valley Leagues. And the main reason, again, within the ADs to join the Pioneer Valley Leagues was the fact that we are having a very difficult time scheduling games outside of our league schedules. So with that said, just recently, in the last couple of weeks, District 1 voted on a new league structures where our Berkshire teams have been pushed into the existing leagues in the Pioneer Valley. For the fall sports, the fall sports are done, barring any appeals that are gonna take place. But basically, within the new, within the leagues, you're seeing about two to three Berkshire teams, depending on the sport, being immersed into the leagues. So with that said, we're going to see a, I would say a slight increase in transportation costs only because we're playing teams down in the valley already. So we're gonna keep a close eye on that next fall through the year to see how our forecasted numbers in transportation relate to the new league structures that are still being derived for the winter and the spring sports of 2021, 2022. Another thing Melissa and I are gonna work on closely in the next year is just an analysis of our user fee. You know, we, we were hoping for a normal year last year, and that didn't happen. So we wanted together to kind of analyze how our user fees are being used to, to, within our budget and analyze and be able to present to the school committee whether there was gonna be an increase needed in the future. We're not ready to present that as we haven't done a thorough analysis. But that's something we're gonna be looking at in the next year. Does anybody have any questions?
You're on mute, Bob.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Cranwell has always let us use the golf course. How about Mirror Valley? Are they gonna continue the relationship?
You know, the time that Coach Salinelli, the plan last fall was yes. We were gonna be able to continue using their course as we have in the past. So Dick Salinelli has not stated to me any differently. If, if we are to have a golf season this spring, which is unlikely right now, per discussion of the ADs last week, next fall, we would be using them. And I see that as, as a, as a venue that we'll be able to continue using.
Okay, great. Any other questions for David regarding any of the athletic areas?
Yeah, I just had one, I, I think along the similar lines Berkshire West was time-to-time utilized. Potential, I, I think the weight room or for specific training, any perceived impacts going forward with change of hands?
You know, I, I haven't had that discussion with the coaches in regards to tennis. Generally, we use those facilities in the early spring when there was still snow on the courts. We would, we would train in Berkshire West for probably roughly a month. Basically, we would train in there until the courts are clear. So, you know, that, that's a very good question. I'm actually gonna write it down right now is to reach out and see where we stand in using their courts for tennis in the spring.
It seems to me, just based on the work that that group is doing, that it probably wouldn't be a problem, but I don't know. I mean, obviously, I don't know that officially, but they seem to be very community oriented.
Yes. No, I agree. So I'll be, I'll be in touch with them this week to see what, what information I can find out.
Any other questions for David?
Well, if, if, if there's no questions, I just, I just a quick report out. I know the school committee approved winter sports. And I, I just find it important within this meeting to let you know that I have visited our Nordic ski team that is a practice-only season. That is going very, very, very well. And I was at the first Alpine race last week, and that is going very, very well. We had our, the girls' race was won by both one of our Lennox skiers and the boys' race was won by Max Tugugli. His sister actually won the girls' race. But both those seasons so far without a hitch, the coaches have been very resilient and the athletes have been very safe.
Good. That's good. Okay, student activities. Mike? Any questions for Mike on student activities? Hearing none, we'll move on to, I believe it's Jen's program is next, secondary health. Any questions for Jen? I did have one question on kind of a long-range thing. It was about a spot. Hang on, spot vision screener. What the heck is that?
That's actually something that we looked into last year. Kathleen, Melissa and I, we got a number of quotes on it. We were looking at it for last year. Over the past couple of years, we've had the Lions Club come in and do vision screening on a couple of our special needs kids. And we really found that that particular tool is extremely supportive and very quick to identify vision issues. And it's something that we'd like to be able to utilize for our preschool and kindergarten screenings as well as to expedite doing vision screenings that we have to do annually on various grades from the elementary school to, to the middle and high school. It's great to be able to have the Lions Club come and do a handful of kids. It's, you know, we have to jump through a couple of hoops, hoops as far as getting releases from families and that. But it's been extremely helpful in monitoring vision issues for our special needs kids where they can't follow direction to really get a good, accurate vision assessment. We looked at it last year because the school health business that we order a lot of our supplies with was doing a special right before Christmas last year where they were kind of doing the machine and the printer. And I think it was like a five or a 10-year maintenance agreement on it. And it was something that we looked into, but we just didn't have the, the funds for it. Melissa had kind of put it on the back burner for possibly a capital funds last spring, depending on where money could be, you know, moved and, and come up with. And it, it obviously COVID hit and that changed. We're not doing screenings this year. The state has put a hold on those because of COVID. So it's not something that, you know, we're kind of chomping at the bit to purchase that piece of equipment. It's several thousand dollars, but I think it's a good investment in the vision of our children. Now, now's a, a perfect opportunity to say that with all the screen time that our kids are doing, their vision and headaches and making sure that those that need visual support have it. So I think it would be a great piece of equipment to add to our district in the future down the road.
Do you have a sense of how much money? Like you said, thousands, but any sense of what the upper?
I think depending on, depending on the package, and I haven't really looked at the pricing this year, but I believe it was running like $5,000 to $7,000. And it's, it's a machine that, it kind of looks like a binocular, and the kids just kind of look into it. And it automatically reads their vision and it prints out like a prescription that they can then take to their pediatrician or to their ophthalmologist to give them an idea of where they, where their vision is. It came to my attention actually because one of our special needs kids several years ago went to the eye doctor and the eye doctor could not assess his vision needs and asked, made contact with me and asked me to reach out and see if the Lions Club would come and do this particular exam on him at the school where he would be comfortable and where they'd be able to access that printout. So I set it up and the parents signed off on it. And we actually had, had the Lions Club come in, do it, do an exam on him. They were able to print it out, and I was able to send a copy to the doctor, send a copy home to mom and have put a copy in my file. And the child was able to get glasses much quicker than would have having to send him to Bay State or Boston to have that vision screening done.
Wow. Well, we'll definitely keep that in mind for the future then, Jen. Any other questions for Jen?
Yeah, I have a question. I just looked at the schedule, schedule, yeah. It, it looks like it decreased a little bit. I'm just curious again, do, are we basing this on the assumption that there'll be no COVID-19 related additional expenses for next year?
Um, I would say yes. Kudos to Melissa Falkowski for the amount of PPE that she was able to acquire so quickly very early on in the pandemic last summer. We haven't barely made a dent in the, in the masks and the PPE that we have been able to acquire from the, the COVID, COVID relief. Melissa's been great at, you know, getting us everything that we need, even things that, you know, we, we aren't sure that, you know, we can afford, but she's been, she's been able to get us all kinds of air purifiers and sanitizing lights and masks and gowns and booties to cover our feet and shields and we've got it all. And quite honestly, you know, although we've been using a lot more surgical masks since our numbers have gone up and quite a bit of the N95 masks because of the numbers that we ordered last year and the fact that so many people came into the school this fall wearing the fabric masks. We've only recently really started to use a lot of our disposable masks. So I don't see well into next year if, if we continue to have the mask, that we would need to order more masks. As far as the rest of the supplies, Band-Aids and those kinds of things, as Mr. Knibl said, we really haven't had a lot of use of that for the kids in the building because the kids are in the building for two hours. They don't have a lot of medical needs during the school day. So I, and, and we, you know, anything that we need to use up the end of this year, this budgetary year that Melissa wants us to use, we can always, you know, stockpile some extra, some extra resources going into next year. So I don't see that the budget's going to be an issue.
All right, thank you.
Bob, I've got one question.
Yep, go ahead.
It just, you know, when I read this, I, I'm specifically referring to kind of the first item under the program concerns and my internet for a second. So if this was addressed, I apologize. But what I read is a department or that is under sort of increasing concerns regarding mental health in, in the middle and high school level prior to COVID. And, and then it, it, there's indication that these, you know, that, that COVID has exacerbated those concerns. So, so my question goes to just, it just basically, for a department that seems to be having to allocate increasing resources towards that, these concerns, is the additional, are there sufficient resources to both identify and support those students that, that prior to COVID were not experiencing these challenges?
Well, I mean, anxiety and depression has been a concern of mine for a couple of years because we've, you know, as a, as a nation seen that increasing in, in our elementary, middle and high school students. I do think that COVID has exacerbated that. I think it's brought a lot of that more to light, especially for, for families as well as for faculty. We're really looking at where the students are and what the students need on a basic need level before we're looking at, you know, they're able, being able to, to access academics. I don't think as far as resources, we're going to know what we need because we don't know what the fall is going to look like and we don't know really what our students are going to need. I think the best laid plans is going to be more having bodies and relationship connections to get our students what they need within the school building. I've done a lot of purchasing over the last couple of years in getting weighted blankets, you know, getting sensory items, getting breathing balls, you know, working on, you know, building some, some curriculums as far as, you know, tapping and some different breathing strategies. I think having Amy Higgins come into the building has been fabulous. She, she and I really align a lot on support for anxiety and depression in the school. And we've been working with some of our students that have been coming back into the building hybrid and supporting them, meeting them where they need to be in the morning, getting them set up, having them have the resources to be able to come to us, to come to one of us when they need a break. I think that collaborative effort needs to continue. But I think a lot of our support of those students, in my opinion, going forward is really going to be that social, emotional peace and rebuilding those relationships. And that's going to be personnel, not necessarily supplies.
Do you have sufficient physical space to provide what you need? In other words, not in terms of storing, but areas where, let's say you have three people in your office. Are there, or, you know, are there, are there sufficient sort of quiet rooms should, should you need it?
I mean, I'm, I'm very fortunate in that the, you know, the, the health office that I have is, is exceptional. I have two, two bed areas for students to be able to have some privacy with curtains. And I do have students even last year that would come, they were having, you know, anxious moments where they would just come sit, you know, plug their music in and sit and, you know, be able to do some deep breathing, regroup and then go back to class. So I have, I have two of those stations. And then I also have what's called a treatment room, which now because of COVID and having to have that medical, that medical space to isolate a student, I now have a, a window in that door, which is great because that gives me another space to really be able to have a student really have true privacy and be able to actually close the door and still observe them. So I've got three spaces. And again, with the space that we have with Amy Higgins and the support that I have from the guidance department as well as the administrative department. We have had times in the school where we've had, you know, minor meltdowns where we've had to deal with a couple of kids needing to take space at the same time. And we've been able to do that effectively, working together as a team. So I don't think space is necessarily an issue. But again, I don't know what the fall is going to look like. You know, if I had eight kids walk into my office and they all needed something, I'm only one person. So I'd have to pull a team together and we'd have to work it out to support the students best we could.
Thank you.
Yeah, and one of the, earlier this year, the Benheim and Mary Elliott came to the strategic planning meeting. They're part of a, an organization at the high school whose name I've forgotten.
Active Minds?
Yes, about, very specifically about mental health. And so we've incorporated their concerns into a mental health strategy for the future. So it, it won't go unnoticed, but obviously the bulk of the work will fall on you and the faculty at the schools. So for that, we are grateful. Great, grateful for the work you've been doing on both the Joint Labor Management Group and the Ad Hoc Medical Committee.
Thank you. I just want to say kudos to the Active Minds group. It's, it's a club group that G T S Dale and myself sit in on. And they are really a group of phenomenal students who are really looking to de-stigmatize mental health issues in the school system and really supporting each other collaboratively and collegiately and really working, working to, to bring kids to a point where they can reach out to the adults in the school and get, get their needs met. And again, really de-stigmatizing that, that, you know, we, we've all got our issues and we all work together and we all support each other. And there's always a light at the end of the tunnel and they've been a great group to work with.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the final program of the night, it's the program with other districts. And these would be the kids who are going out to Teconic or McCann or Pittsfield High for programs. And it sounds like we're, these are with other districts, but we also have work going on in this area with the program that Desi's promoting with B C C and, and, and us and some of the courses being developed in other areas. But I, I had a question on this, Mike. Has Teconic, since they've, you know, reopened with the new building, have they become more difficult for us to get kids into or is it, is it still fine?
So, so far, it, it appears that we, we don't see an impact. I know meeting with them in the principal's roundtable, I hear them talk about their growing pains of, of limited space. In fact, when they first opened, they had to, they had to fit in on, on a third lunch wave where they were used to having two lunch waves. So I, I think they met the demand from the kids. And I do think that, you know, Lennox students are, are, they're not turned away because they, they tend to be, you know, the, the kids they're looking for because they do look at their academic record and, you know, they do look at discipline and things like that when a student applies.
So it's not an automatic that we, that we get in. This is the application process.
Correct. It, it's an application process and, and, you know, the, the, the big, you know, the big thing that parents need to know is that they're going to be put through a rotation of a variety of vocations their, their first year anyway. They may want to choose to be there, but they have to cut the mustard. You know, Tom Renton was, was a teacher there and and he was doing building trades and, and he would tell me the stories of, you know, girls that wanted to do just cosmotology had to pass his class in construction trade. And, and that was a make or break situation for some of the kids that applied from other districts. So, you know, the, the kids have to be motivated and, and ready to do what, what is asked of them.
And does a student have to go for four years or, or do they just go as juniors and seniors or?
They, they, they usually, the best, just like our school, i- it's the best place to enter is at the lowest grade, which is ninth grade. So we, we, we know of two prospective eighth graders who, who will be applying on top of the students that already attend. I believe the kids have already attended where school choice students from Pittsburgh.
So on that same page that I'm on, the overview, you're going to want to change the dates there because you say vocational ed placements in 2018, 19.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To change, change that. Otherwise, we'll think they've graduated.
They may have.
Right.
Those kids did. I did change the number. The bottom line.
Any other questions for Mike?
No.
Listen, Mike, thanks for all the presentation you've made tonight and thank all of your faculty members. If we haven't thanked them already, make sure that they know that we appreciate this opportunity.
Absolutely. I know there were no questions about student activities, but Jen brought out a big highlight there that, you know, our students always come to us with, with incredible programs and, and, you know, the generous, the generous staff that will reach out and, and launch something with the students along with the financial support of a stipend is, is just fantastic.
Very good. Well, thank you. And, and Brian, this is your last one of these. Don't just dance on the table.
Well, I appreciate you guys and we're going to look towards booking that tour soon.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for hanging on, everybody. It's a long night.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, I think that takes care of our business for the evening.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if it's for you or Dr. Kim or Principal Knibl, but I've been hit on the street.
We've lost you.
Quite a bit. I don't know. Do we have a target date? Can you hear me now, Bob?
I can hear you. I didn't catch what you were saying though.
I've been hit on the streets quite a bit about whether Lennox has a target date. Are we going to remain hybrid for the remainder of the year? Are we looking, looking to come back sometime this spring? Are we going to be open deck come September, full deck? Or what are we doing? Nothing's really communicated and families are getting frustrated. And I don't want to just dismiss Ms. Ryves' letter. She put a lot of heart and knowledge into it. I'd really like to see if maybe we can put that on the agenda for our next meeting. And let's get a target date going here for a reason why we don't have one.
Okay.
Yeah, I do think we need to start looking more towards, you know, the next phase.
Yeah.
I mean, one phase, time to start thinking about the next phase.
Because you have vaccines coming out now and eligibility should be by the end of March, beginning of April to be able to get them and our faculty and staff will be protected. It's just food for thought. We can't keep tailoring it. If they want answers, we got to start giving them some answers or at least speculations.
Okay, so we will put that on our, on our agenda for the next meeting, which is March 1st, I think. Is that right, Amy?
Yes, March 1st.
March 1st. Okay.
Along that line, Bob, is there another K through two reopening meeting scheduled anytime coming up?
That's scheduled for March 4th. And the reason we pushed it off to March 4th was the last meeting of the, of it, we had, we had determined that we were not going to move kids' classes because that was going to result in like 25 to 35% of kids having to move. This other option that I proposed was having us go back in grades K and 1, grades K and 1, full time with the teacher teaching synchronously with kids at home, as long as the numbers worked out that we didn't have more than 11 or 12 kids in class. And that didn't, the, the teachers on the, on the subcommittee indicated that that would be difficult to do with the num, having more kids in the class and doing the kids at home. That the advantage of the way it's working now is they've got small numbers so they can, they can give the kids in front of them attention as well as the kids on the screen. But if you've got 12 kids in front of you and three or four or five or eight or whatever the other number would be at home, it was pretty tricky. So we decided that we would wait till March 4th and see what information we had on vaccination of teachers to see where we stood in that, in that regard. We really couldn't make a decision until we had, until people started getting vaccinated.
We also had to consider middle and preschool too, not just preschool and kindergarten, first grade, district-wide.
So, yeah, so beyond just K and 1.
Middle school parents are the most ones that are inquiring now and think they want answers. They're getting pretty testy about it, I might add.
Okay. So we'll put that in the agenda for March 1st. Anything else? I could take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Robert Munch seconds. Roll call, vote. Bob Munch?
Bob Munch, aye.
Francis Sorrentino? Anne Marie O'Brien?
Anne Marie O'Brien, aye.
Christine Morrow?
Christine Morrow, aye.
David Remmler?
Thank you, everyone, and aye.
And Molly Elliott?
Molly Elliott, aye.
And Bob Vaughn, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.